Elaine, you ready?
Yes.
Thank you, Godwin. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman, um, Wynn. I'm sorry, Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
We have a quorum. We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, July 23rd, 2012, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First agenda item is the mayor's public announcements. Presentation by Citizens for Greener Evanston has been postponed because they were not all available tonight. And next, I am pleased to announce is the Evanston Preservation Commission 2012 Preservation and Design Awards. Carlos, would you like to organize us?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the Preservation Commission and the City of Evanston. I just want to briefly ask you to come forward, Mayor. And what we're going to do is we're going to call all the awards recipients at one time per project. So if your name is called, please come forward and stand next to the mayor. And we will give you your certificates. Yes, Mayor, in the middle. And then we will take one group shot per project, so make it pass. So I'm going to introduce to Gary Shoemaker, who is the Chair of the Preservation Commission, over here, to my left, and also Chris Harson, who's the Vice Chair of the Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Carlos. First, I want to take a quick moment to thank the council, the city staff, and the volunteers who have made these design and preservation awards possible. This has been a great year for the commission. We've had a lot of wonderful projects. And as you'll see tonight, a lot of wonderful things to recognize in our community. So the first thing that we'll get to is I'd like to thank the volunteers who gave their time, the professionals Catherine Quinn of Catherine Quinn Architects, Quinn Summers-Yant, a preservation consultant on the North Shore, and Mary McWilliams, one of our Associate Commissioners on the Preservation Commission, who also has served the community for quite a long time in a wonderful capacity. The first award we're going to give tonight is an honorable mention for environmental design, and that's going to go to 1856 Orington Avenue. Steve Matts of Northwestern University is the owner. Dennis Langley of Wees Langley Wees. And Dave Olson and Mike Shadowski of WB Olson could step forward. The jury was pleased with this project and noted that it's the solution and use of the garden wall to obscure the ramp and the complimentary design to the quadrangle of Northwestern's campus. Thank you very much. Our next award is also an honorable mention for environmental design. And this award is given to 647 University Place, the Rogers House dormitory. I'd like to ask Andrew McGonigal of Northwestern University, Dennis Langley again of Wees Langley Wees, and Dave Olson and Mike Shadowski of WB Olson again to step forward and receive this award. The jury commented that the use of retaining walls and the low profile of the additions, along with the material harmonization with the existing building, were the redeeming qualities of this project. And this year's award for environmental design and sensitive alteration is given to 625 637 University Place, also a Northwestern project. If the owners, Northwestern University Andrew McGonigal, Delta, 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 Betty Olivera, Tri-Delta, sorry, Alpha Chi Omega, Karen, and I apologize, I'm not going to be able to pronounce your last name properly, could step forward, along with the architects Ellen Galland, Marion Tweedy, and Diane Keon, and the contractor Frank Stoll and Sons. The jury recognized this project for its creative solution incorporating sloping walks and extensive landscaping, along with pathway lighting and minimal use of the conventional accessible ramps and railings. Also given the award for environmental design and sensitive addition is one Northwestern place. The owners, Northwestern University Andrew McGonigal, the architect Stanley Consultants, Cigar Sonar, and the contractor Ragnar Benson, Andrew Gibbons. The jury commented that this project effectively reduced paved surfaces, walkways, and provided additional green space and bicycle facilities, along with extensive landscaping improvements that enhance the aesthetics of Northwestern's campus and the view from Sheridan. Thank you very much. The next project on our list this evening is also an award for environmental design and sensitive alteration. This award is given to 2601 Orington Avenue. The owners Northwestern University, again Andrew McGonigal, the architect Rockwell Associates, represented by Ellen Galland and Marion Tweedy, and the contractor from Iceland Builders. This award is given for its effective use of creative solutions for accessibility to the house, and was noted as a great example of how institutional buildings have been well-integrated into residential historic neighborhoods. One, two. Thank you. Thank you very much. The award for sensitive adaptive reuse is given this year to 2121 Sheridan Road, also known as Loader Hall. The owner Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary, represented by Arnold Henning, the architects Maguire Gilleske and Associates, Ann Maguire and Amy Guan, and the contractor WB Olson, Dave Olson, and Mike Shadowski. The jury noted the imaginative sustainable design solutions and the sensible rehabilitation of the exterior of this building. Thank you. Thank you. This year, the award for proper rehabilitation and restoration of a property is awarded to 2603 Sheridan Road, also known as the HL Clark House, specifically the Koch House. The owner, the City of Evanston, represented by Doug Gaynor, the architect Elliot Dudnick, and Continental Construction. The jury took a moment to commend the City of Evanston's for its public commitment to the restoration and rehabilitation of this important publicly-owned structure, and also noted the high quality of the restoration as it was executed. One, two. Thank you very much. Honorable mention for proper rehabilitation and restoration is given to 2231 Asbury Avenue. The owner, John Bausch and Amy Kohn, the architect Gregory Moon of Images and Architecture, and the contractor Boden Kaminsky of Images by Kaminsky and Moon. The jury noted the sensitive solution to providing sheltered entry on a visible site. Thank you. Thank you very much. This year, the award for sensitive addition is given to 1120 Elmwood Avenue. The recipients Carol and Jeff McCullough, the architect Elliot Dudnick, and the contractor Warren Grimsley of the Grimsley Group. The jury commenting that this is a sensitive and well-executed addition, and the appropriate proportions in the overall design executed. Our next award for sensitive addition is given to 419 Greenwood Street. The homeowners Kim and Jeff Hammack, the architect Paul Janiki, and the contractor Alan Reiberg of Alberg Construction. The jury commented that this is a sensitive addition complementing the original house, and that the proportion, scale, and details are very well-balanced. Thank you. The award for appropriate new construction is given to 1216 Judson Avenue. The owner Polly and Ken Ratner, the architects Ellen Galland and Marion Tweedy of Rockwell Associates, and the contractor Erickson Armstrong Corporation, Kim Erickson. The jury noted the well-designed accessory structure and the appropriate use of exterior building materials in the addition of this garage to the property at 1216 Judson. Thank you. And the last award this evening for appropriate new construction goes to 1220 Judson Avenue. The owner Letitia and Jeff Mann, the architect Paul Janiki, and the contractor McKnight and Partners, Jonathan McKnight. The jury pointed out that this is a beautiful garage that speaks to its own time, and that it remains sensitive to the architecture of the original house. If I could, one more moment, if you would. On behalf of the commission, I'd like to take this opportunity to also thank the council and the mayor for their stewardship of the building that we're standing in right now. Over the past year, you've done wonderful things to this building. We appreciate it, and the community appreciates it, and we look forward to more improvements to this building. And I'd like to also thank all the nominees, the homeowners, and the judges for their time and commitment to the community of Evanston. Thank you very much.
City Manager, do you have public announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one announcement that will be delivered by Corporation Counsel, Grant Farrar.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Assistant Clerk Outwell, Grant Farrar Corporation Counsel, it's my pleasure to introduce a new member of the Law Department tonight. It's my privilege to introduce Henry Ford Jr. He comes to us, his first day is today. He comes to us from a municipal law firm where he was practicing for a number of years, specializing in municipal defense and litigation. He's going to be assisting our department on litigated matters and other matters of concern to the city and the council. So having said that, I'd like him to give a brief introduction.
Didn't you leave out the part where he's an Evanston resident?
And he's a proud member of the Ninth Ward. Thank you, Mayor, for reminding me of that critical, critical issue.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Grant, and good evening, council and attendees. And yes, today's my first day, and I'm honored as an Evanston resident for the past, I guess, four years to finally be working for the City of Evanston. And hopefully, I'll get to meet all of you and learn more about the individual concerns of each of the different wards, and just continue the good work of the Law Department and the initiatives that Grant has brought forward. So thank you so much, and I look forward to meeting all of you.
Welcome to Evanston. Is that it, Marty?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
City Clerk, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Council. I've been asked to read the election calendar for April 2013. September 25th is going to be the beginning of the first day that the circulation petitions can be circulated. December 17th is going to be the first day for filing the petitions. December 17th to the 24th, filing period also for petitions. The last day to file the petition will be December 24 at 5:00 p.m. And early voting will be March 18 to April 4. My understanding is if you're in line to file at 5:00 p.m., you'll be allowed to file your petitions with the city clerk, to have your name placed on the ballot. If there are four or more persons filing for the same office and who are filing at the same time on the first day of filing, there will be an announcement for a lottery to be held. Those candidates will have to pull a number from a concealed bag to determine their placement on the ballot. That's it.
Thank you, City Clerk.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is citizen comment. Citizen comment is an important part of council meetings. We welcome comments from all citizens, and we encourage the expression of different opinions and viewpoints. Comments from concerned citizens are another reason that makes the City of Evanston a remarkable place to live. The city's Board of Ethics concluded its independent investigation of the Kendall matter and determined there was no conflict of interest regarding it. Pursuant to Council Rule 64, that matter is concluded and is beyond the jurisdiction of the council. All further redundant comments made on this subject made by any speaker will be ruled out of order. No further redundant and duplicative comments, such comment which has gone on for over 16 months, will be heard on the Kendall matter at this or any other council meeting. This ruling is in accordance with the council rules, the holding of the U.S. Supreme Court and Perry Education Association versus Perry Local Educators Association, and Section 206G of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Each speaker has three minutes, and I will call you up in groups of four if you would give your name and address before you speak. That would be terrific. On agenda items, two speakers are Priscilla Giles and Junad Riske. On non-agenda topics, Douglas Cannon and BK Raoul. Come on up, Priscilla, you and Junad are the next, first two. Priscilla, you're first.
The agenda item, my name is... Priscilla Giles, and I'm speaking to A3. Three, approval of contract with KLF Trucking for 2012 debris hauling and disposal. And I'm wondering why we need to have another hauling and disposal of this, what kind of this trucking this is when we already have two already in Evanston? Why do we need three? Or this is something different?
City Manager, did you want to answer that, or you want to just address it later?
I can address it now, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of council, the reason for the utilization of KLF was the style of trucks, it's my understanding, from staff in the Water Department and in Public Works that are hauling, they're using what is commonly referred to as bomber trucks, and that they were best able to provide the size of vehicles needed to haul the material. And if, I can also follow up with council as need be if we'd like a more detailed answer. But we did address that a little bit earlier with staff earlier today.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey. Well, just to clarify, this is not hauling away debris, for example, from a demolished building. This is debris from the Water Department, is it not?
It is, yes.
So it's a little different.
Junad Riske. Tonight I will speak to the Compensation Committee report for council members and the mayor. I agree with the one member of the committee, salaries should be cut, given the city's deteriorating financial position, and the fact one council member stated recently, we will be laying off city employees in the next budget cycle. I would like a clarification on medical benefits. It is my understanding the City Council does not set the medical benefits. It's my understanding the city manager sets the cost to the council members. I find this an interesting conflict of interest, though. Just before the last city manager left, she decided to raise the council members' medical benefits from $37 for a PPO Blue Cross plan that's valued at $17,000 and bring it up to par with city employees' payments. So it's clear to me that the council does not set medical benefits, and that our city manager sets those. And it's very interesting. Anyway, it is my position council members and the mayor, as part-time employees, are not entitled to full medical benefits that they receive, since no other part-time city employees get those benefits. This special perk is costing the taxpayers over $100,000 a year, and needs to be stopped. I suggest the council and mayor be allowed to purchase medical insurance at full cost, just like other part-time employees. I really don't want to hear that you work hard or this and that, and this is a full-time job. If you need to really work somewhere else, then if you really feel that this is not acceptable. Those, and that's really all, I'll say to that, there's one other item tonight here that I find another waste of taxpayer money, and that's a $35,000 we're going to give to a business to open up here, some type of food business. Here again, we're using taxpayers' money for really private uses that have no benefit to the city. At the last meeting, an Alderman was accused of conflict of interest, and I thought it was interesting only in that the conflict, it might be the Alderman wants to have recreation for children and families when we are opening silly things with our money like wine and cheese bars. And I find this kind of use of our money for private uses and not public uses to be outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Douglas R. Cannon, attorney at law, on behalf of my clients BK and Padma Rao. And council, congratulations. We're going to give you something to sink your teeth into, first off, today. My question, my point is to bring into focus the reality of the ridiculous ruling with regard to jurisdiction your honor just read. You rely upon the Perry case. In reality, it is so factually distinguishable, even a first-year law student would be able to tell the difference between the reality as utilized in this room and the distinction of the factual situation in Perry. Perry was a proprietary communication system, internal. This is a public forum, and the difference is night and day. I call council's attention to the case Vagera versus Waugh Egan. I'm certain you'll find it almost on all fives. In Vagera, the decision was rendered by responsible and noted jurist Milton Shader, Northern District of Illinois. He analyzed comprehensively the whole requirement of public meeting forum deprivation of First Amendment speech. He even cited part of Perry, not to his detriment, not to the detriment of the plaintiffs in that case, but to make a clear point that there is a distinction between, quote, "traditional public forum" and "private venue." Vagera said in effect that members of the City Council of Waugh Egan can be personally liable and no immunity, governmental immunity attaching to them when they violate citizens' First Amendment rights. And he went further. He pointed out that silence of other members of the City Council in Waugh Egan can be considered aiding and abetting, and thus liability attaches to them personally and to the city corporate structure ultimately. There are those of you who are sitting on this council who have law degrees, I urge you to pass on to your fellow councilmen a fair reading of the Vagera case, and I certainly expect the new council will do as well. What does this mean? You have denied my clients their right of free speech essentially on the basis that there's no jurisdiction, that this council has every right and power to amend, modify, or repeal any ordinance that has already passed, and by that, there is no way you can argue logically that the Kendall Project is not before this council, and it is certainly within the jurisdiction and powers of this council. This non-jurisdictional issue is simply a foolish, if not purile pretext to avoid what you do not wish to hear. It is a product of less than professional legal analysis, and speaks more to a political analysis.
Mr. Cannon, I need you to wrap up.
Very definitely, madam. And we'll put it this way, allow my clients to speak, don't turn off their microphones, or otherwise accept the consequences. And council, I have copies of the case.
Thank you.
My comments were approved by my attorney. It seems that this council is under the impression that they can silence taxpayers by turning off the microphones. I submit that such actions only make matters worse. I suggest that you visit the current news about what is happening at Penn State, the Penn State. People in power felt that they could suppress news of the illegal activities of one of their own. I submit that what is happening there now should be a lesson for those who abuse their position and try to cover... position and try to cover up the truth. I submit that this council is wrong to vote to kill over two dozen trees in a one-block area for no reason. I submit that this council is wrong to vote for an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street and thereby risk the safety of innocent pedestrians, mainly children. I submit that this council added to these wrongs by approving the plan with no public discussion, no discussion at all.
The Kendall property is...
Now, this council tries to silence all taxpayer comment on its official actions, which afford...
She did not mention Kendall. She did not mention Kendall, you did. Cover-up of serious wrongdoing and is itself unacceptable and unconstitutional. You can never stop me from talking about the Kendall trees, but you can spare the Kendall trees from facing an untimely death due to your ill-advised resolution. Comply with the city code. The city code says to protect the Kendall trees, and I shall return.
Thank you. The next four speakers are Padma Raell, Mike Vasilko, Priscilla Giles, and Junad Riske.
Padma Raell, 2246 Sherman Avenue. My comments were approved by my attorney. We oppose this council's vote sentencing over two dozen mature trees to death in a one-block area for no reason.
That is out of order.
You attack, in a one-block area for no reason, killing trees? I can't talk about trees? Your ethics entity did not rule about trees. You attack taxpayers who point out the negative impact of needlessly killing trees that produce oxygen, remove carbon dioxide, provide shade, furnish homes for songbirds, and serve as living links to our history. You try to silence taxpayers who ask you to comply with Section 617-6 of the city code, which requires, quote, "existing trees shall be preserved in place wherever possible," end quote. Some of the trees in the one-block area are centuries old. They have been part of our community for a long time, but they have no voice to defend themselves. Your mayor turns off the microphone when we speak for our oldest neighbors. I submit that your attempts to silence us regarding the matter create the appearance of a cover-up of serious wrongdoing. Contrary to your mayor's claims, your ethics entity's advisory opinion does not bind the public to silence. Taxpayers have the right to discuss your first ward member's assurances to the developer's lawyer that your vote would push through. Thank you for the evidence and for proving my point that you cannot follow the Constitution. Congratulations on joining the dictators of the world.
My name's Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue, Evanston. Recently, the, I guess, the study for the Performing Arts Center began, the downtown Evanston Performing Arts Center. There was no public notice of some of the focus group meetings that began. I was curious as to why that took place. There were meetings scheduled that were considered open meetings, yet there was no schedule or dates published to attend. Even the aldermen were not aware that these studies and focus groups began to meet. I learned of the meetings purely by coincidence, browsing the Evanston Now website. I was able to rearrange my schedule for one of the meetings that I learned of the date and time. And I guess, you know, there's some things that were mentioned, some correspondence that I circulated with city staff. I asked why there was no public announcement of these focus groups. I was advised that the meetings were open to the public, yet there was no, there was no distribution of dates or times or anything published in the city's schedule. So I found that somewhat disingenuous, that it's open to the public, but the public doesn't know when it's going to occur. During the focus group meeting, I was told that an independent market study of patrons was not part of the consultant's team's scope of work, yet it was stated that a final report would include a financial analysis. Well, I can tell you with certainty that the financial analysis will be somewhat meaningless without knowing what level of ongoing patron financial support the performing arts development will receive. I bring this up at this time because I think it's not too late to implement an independent market study. In the proposal I submitted for the same RFP, I stated fairly strongly that the market study was important for the report to be considered credible. I included a cost for that market study in my proposal at a value of about $35,000, which is what several estimates that I took valued that kind of a study for. Several representatives of the theater groups that were at the focus group voiced their support for such a study, and because I feel so strongly about it, I would be happy to contribute some of the costs of a market study. It's important, I think, to make this study positive and to make it successful, and without a market study taking place, it's like building a building without a foundation, in my opinion. So I think the entirety of the report will be questionable without that critical piece of information. It was also stated by city staff at the focus group that the goal of the project is to build capacity and to grow home institutions. That's kind of a quote. It went on, they went on to say, "We're not looking to take in a traveling show from Chicago." And I think this is a huge mistake, an example of setting the bar fairly low. Bringing nationally-recognized performers to Evanston would also bring a following of patrons that would in turn bring the much-needed financial revenue...
Mr. Vasilko, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. To support an otherwise not-for-profit development. That kind of brings me back to reinforcing the need for an independent markets demand study, which will estimate the financial support of patrons for the arts, and I just ask you to take these suggestions to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
A few council meetings back, a member of the council suggested the public was filing excessive freedom of information requests and wasting staff time. I take an opposite point of view to this issue. I feel city staff is wasting the public's time, since they continually are blocking legitimate freedom of information requests when the public files those requests. On the issue of medical benefits, I have filed several requests over the years. Several, probably close to four years ago, I filed a request and was told, I asked which council members took the medical benefits. I was told I could not have that because you had personnel files. I'm sure none of you have seen your personnel files, but then, several years later, I filed the same request, and I was told I could not have the information because of HIPAA. And here again, that doesn't make any sense. Recently, though, it was reported in the local press that the mayor and two of the aldermen don't take medical benefits. By the chair of the committee told the press this. So clearly, this wasn't a confidential thing that I couldn't have. So this really, either we have a lot of incompetence here because of how we run the place, or somebody doesn't know what they're doing. I believe that what's happening here is the legal department is making excuses to not let these requests go out because they possibly embarrass the city or cause a problem. On another FOIA, I was denied that FOIA because the so-called final report had never been issued. Well, here again, that was another ridiculous thing. And frankly, looking at a recent issue with a realtor, and I don't own realty property in this town, I mean, it appears he was denied information that he was continually asking for, basically because it would have embarrassed the city with those inspections and other problems. So it clearly to me, what's going on here, there is a, there is, seems to, I don't want to use the word conspiracy, but clearly people in the city would like to limit information to the public. I think the council members here and the mayor need to question whether the city is road-blocking legitimate requests, and really, what is the process here of these requests? Why do they need to go through the legal department? Aren't your city staff capable enough to know what's going on here? I mean, we're hiring more lawyers, but what's the purpose of this? And I mean, as a taxpayer, this, I find this troubling, that information is hidden, trying to be hid from the public. And, you know, basically, the city was slapped on the wrist recently by the state, I've read, because of FOIAs. That's all that happens. So the city will continue to do this. And I mean, I guess people need to come to the council and talk about legitimate requests that were denied, and basically expose this, because that's the only way this is going to be resolved. I mean, the state coming here and filing complaints against the city isn't going to do anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla Giles, Tina Payden, and I believe Mary Rosinski has left, but Mary, if you're still here.
Priscilla Giles, and I'm still speaking to the lack of a handicapped or physically-challenged entrance to Fleetwood Jordane. And it is very sad to see people who are that challenged having to struggle over curbs. The, what shall I say? I guess the concession that was given is not even allowing cars to come up and drop the people off at the door. They still have the long walk from the curb to the door of Fleetwood. I think this is a disgrace to the city of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rayney?
Madam Mayor, I would really like a report on Priscilla's comments and what we are doing about it, if we really are not accessible at Fleetwood Jordane, and I think you're right, we're not, but we have to have a plan. So could we get a report from our Facilities Department? Thanks for reminding us.
Thank you.
My name is Tina Payden, 1122 Emerson Street. I'm here today to talk about 1509 Emerson Street. My parents owned the property at 1507 Emerson Street. This is an NSP-2 project, as you can see from the pictures that I'm passing around. This property was started in the fall of 2011. I also appeared before plan commission to tell them that they needed to follow rules. They did tear down my fence during the process and had trucks going back and forth on my property. We did come to a conclusion with the management company who was managing the project at the time, and they did rebuild my fence. As you can see from the pictures, in February of 2012, they stopped work on this project, and it's supposed to be torn down, from my understanding. I have asked many times what's happening with the project, and all I get is the answer, "I don't know. We're looking for a person to tear down the property." They did not follow rules when they were going to, when they removed asbestos from the property. They weren't required to put up any plastic or anything, which came over to our side. And also, as you can see, there's busted-out windows, open for rodents, animals, people. The gate's been open several times. I called about that. And when my family is trying to rent out property apartments in the building next door, people say, "I don't want to rent from you. Look at what's next door." So I need some answers about what's happening with this project and people, other projects that are in the neighborhood that have been going forward, that have been approved for money, including the Emerson Street Square project. You're going on and continuing to give money for these different projects, but nothing's happening. And so now we have a bunch of properties that look like this or that have been torn down and have fences around them and doing nothing for a long time. So I would like to know what's going on, and I need to rent out my apartments and not have anything like this. And when you do do the tear down, that there to be followed rules and regulations, as I am. Because if this was my property, you would be giving me code violations. Thank you.
Thank you. We will have someone get back to you. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rayney, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, the consent agenda is as follows. First, approval of the minute to the regular council meeting of July 9. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening and asked you to approve the city payroll through July 1, the amount of $2,781,931.55, the city bills, through July 24, and the amount of $4,194,076.45. The Parking and Transportation Committee and our staff and committee recommend approval to continue a maintenance agreement for Sherman Plaza for the period of August 23 to 2012 through August 22, 2013. Funding is from the Parking Fund in the amount of $115,000. We ask your approval also of the 2012 roof replacement project at the Police and Fire Headquarters to L. Marshall, Inc., in the amount of $384,000. We ask your approval also that the council, that you authorize the city manager to execute a contract for debris hauling and disposal with KLF Trucking in the amount of $163,305. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute a change order, number three, with G.A. Johnson &amp; Son for the Service Center Parking Deck Repair Project, which extends the substantial completion deadline from July 20 to 12, 2012, to September 10, 2012. The committee recommends that you adopt Resolution 26R12, which will authorize the manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Office of the Comptroller for access to the local debt recovery program to recoup dollars owed to the city of Evanston. The city council is requested to authorize the manager to execute an extension of the agreement with account temps for the collection coordinator position through December 31, 2012. This is for action. In addition, we ask your approval to introduce Ordinance 73012, which amends portion of the city code, Section 10119, Schedule 11, nine, parking prohibited, parking at certain times, to add, at any time, oops, to add, at any time daily, except Saturday, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday, Lake Street, South Side, Maple Avenue, Two Oak Avenue. As I said, that's for introduction. Next item is, Madam Mayor, it says that it's going to be for introduction and action, but I believe the committee's direction is simply to introduce tonight.
All right.
This is Ordinance 75012. We request that you approve introduction of this ordinance, which amends Title III, Chapter 15 of the city code to more thoroughly regulate junk dealers and peddlers, including scrap metal scavengers. Also, we will have an amendment that will come back, and it has to do with certain wording.
Thank you.
Just for introduction.
Yes. Pardon me?
Just for introduction.
Okay. Next is, we ask your approval for Ordinance 77012, which amends Section 356(c) of the city code, 1979, as amended to increase the number of Class C liquor licenses from 30 to 31 to permit issuance to Found Investments LLC, doing business as Found Restaurant. Madam Mayor, under Planning and Development Committee, the chairman of that committee will address these two items, and moving right along. Next item is the Mayor's Compensation Committee. It's recommended that the city council receive the report of the Mayor's Compensation Committee. Next, under Economic Development. The first item is, the Economic Development Committee and staff recommend approval of financial assistance for facade improvements for Studio SLK located... financial assistance for facade improvements for Studio SLK located at 1934 Maple Avenue on a 50/50 cost-sharing basis, not to exceed $1,318. Item 03 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. Next item is under Housing and Community Development Act Committee. The committee recommends approval of Resolution 53R12, which authorizes the manager to submit a substantial amendment to the City of Evanston Consolidated Plan 2012 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. That is for action. And Madam Mayor has submitted requests for appointments to the Board of Ethics, Laura Traheo Webb, to the Board of Ethics. And with that, Madam Mayor concludes the consent agenda, and I move approval.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, seeing no signs anyone wants further discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Win, Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Grover, you had no items. All right. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Planning and Development Committee, Ordinance 69012, amending portions of the zoning ordinance to Central Street Corridor, Overly District, and Ordinance 70012, amending the zoning map to rezone certain properties. 2635 Crawford Avenue, Evanston, was referred back to staff. There was consensus of the committee that we would like to see the development contained on the Sitco lot, as it stands now. And so that's gone back to staff with encouragement to the developer to look at that.
Thank you. All right, as there's nothing else.
Economic Development.
Economic Dev, okay, sorry. Who's the Chair of Economic Development? Alderman Grover?
I chair so many committees these days.
Oh, three.
The committee recommends approval of Resolution 58R12, authorizing the city manager to execute an economic development grant with Now We're Cooking, Inc.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I believe that we should help everybody we can possibly help, but I don't believe we should be giving money away, especially not to businesses. I think, based on the issue between applicants and banks, I know we sometimes have to act as the banker, and I have no trouble with that. And somebody said to me earlier, "Well, what if they don't have any equity?" Well, you know, with businesses in Evanston, if the city is the banker for smaller amounts, I would have no problem with a good faith for an organization such as Now We're Cooking. But I think to establish a grant program that goes into the next administration even is just not very prudent. And I believe that we're starting to have a record of loaning money to businesses. On Howard Street, those businesses are being loaned money. The Chicken and Waffles being loaned money. And I think that's really the way to go. When we do the facades, we split the difference with the applicant. I just, I think the time has come when we're going to have to really start looking at some of these programs as a way to refund the program with loan repayments. And so that's my position on this.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Does anyone else want to speak to this? All right. City Clerk, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 58R12, authorizing the city manager to execute an economic development grant agreement with Now We're Cooking, Inc. Would you please call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Four to four.
Four to four, I vote aye.
Okay, five to four.
Is this a situation where you tie votes?
It's a tie vote.
Tie?
City Attorney?
Does the mayor vote to make the five, the number five? Does he have to have five votes to pass?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, grant for our Corporation Council. This requires a simple majority. In a four-to-four case, the mayor is deciding vote, however she votes.
Okay. Then that's five to four. Aye.
That concludes the agenda, and we are at call of the wards. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor. Bike the Bridge is going to be September 30th, just want to remind everybody, but on July 26th, at Brummel Park, there will be fabulous food truck fest and concert. This year, we have five food trucks, including our very own Hummingbird. And I encourage you to get there early. Bring your chairs, your candles, your dogs, your kids, and cash, because the food trucks only take cash.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris?
I want to thank you to the Ninth Ward residents who came out to our ward meeting last week, and to Grace Lutheran Church for hosting, and to all the city staff that came and presented. There was no air conditioning in the church basement, so it was a little hot last week. So thanks for everyone for staying through the heat.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate everyone who received preservation awards tonight, including Northwestern University, and I believe there are five or six awards, there are five awards. And hopefully, next year, we'll be, they'll receive an award for the restoration of the former Ricemore School.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
First, I want to wish a belated happy birthday to Alderman Grover and also Alderman Burris, who celebrate July birthdays, along with myself. I also want to thank Safeway. The employees of Dominix this month donated $25,000 to Grandmother Park Initiative, and I just would like to thank, acknowledge the employees of Dominix in the Second Ward for their wonderful contributions. This August, our ward meeting will be canceled, and I'll be sending out an electronic notification of that, and because I will be spending my time at a number of block meetings or block parties. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Just in case nobody else mentions this, the Run for Walk, 4.1 mile run, and I think 5K walk, is this Sunday at Ryan Field at 7:30. So that's a good Evanston event, and that's a fundraiser for the Care for Evanston Animal Shelter, and I hope to see many of you out there.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes? Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
No reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to add to Alderman Wilson's remarks about the Run for Walker, it's to honor former football coach Randy Walker. And it will begin and end at Ryan Field, and you have a chance to see yourself cross the finish line on the Jumbotron, so it would be a good race. It's going to be a hot one, though. And second of all, we have, we've had a lot of discussions about public safety and pedestrian safety, and tomorrow night is, I think, the first of a couple workshops on pedestrian safety, right here at the Civic Center on the second floor. So bring your best ideas and great thinking about how we can address pedestrian cyclist and traffic safety in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind everyone that August 9th is the My Evanston, My Neighbor Dialogue on Race and Understanding Our Hopes and Dreams for a Better Evanston. And it's the mayor's task force that's been working on this. It will be here in the parasol room at 7:00. On August 9th is the first of three meetings, so hopefully, everyone will come out.
Thank you for that reminder. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene a new executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, real estate litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five, ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, C5, C6, C11, and C21.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The ayes have it.